Okay, I've got five o'clock, so I'm gonna call the Hartford City Council's order this time. We'll have a...
Open up a word prayer. Father, we give you thanks that you've given us another day of life and thankful, Father, that we can live in a free country where we can govern ourselves. And Father, we just pray tonight that you'll guide us, help us make the right decisions that would benefit all those involved, the citizens of Hartford, the employees, and each person who takes a part in the life here in Hartford. So, Father, we just ask that decisions made, honor you, pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Do we have any investors that wish to address the council tonight? Okay. If there are none, then we'll take a look at the minutes from our last three meetings. The first one that we'll consider is the November 15 special call meeting. Look those over, then I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes. Of course, y'all weren't here, so you might have been here, but...
I'll make the motion.
All right.
Accept the minutes.
All right. Mayor Bill makes the motions. They're second.
They're second.
All right. Any discussion? None, so all in favor, stick the five with a lifted hand. Thank you. Motion's carried. All right. Take a look at your special call meeting for December 14th. She made motion, Kenny second.
Make the motion, accept.
Motion, accept. Second. Okay. David seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, uplift your hand. Motion's carried. All right. Let's do your third set of minutes there. Special call meeting on December 27th. Motion, accept.
I'll make the motion, accept it.
All right. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, uplift your hand. Thank you. Motion's carried. Tara's not with us tonight. She's in quit care with had severe pain on the right side, so I don't know what the deal was, but it happened just maybe hour ago, so she sends her regrets she can't be with us right now. I'm sure she'd much rather be here. All right. We'll take a look at the financials for the month, all these financial reports that have been given. You have accounts, balances, pays. Any questions about anything? That's one reason that we try to get this out to you a couple of days before a meeting so that you have a chance to go over all of the accounts, all the checks that are written, try to get the questions answered, so...
Anybody have a list of the acronyms used in all this stuff?
Well, the PEPSCO and all those others.
And SUCCO and...
Yeah. Most of those are, well, you can explain...
Having PEPSCO retirement is a plan that was offered a long time ago, and we only have one employee at this place.
Oh, really?
KLEF, K-L-E-F-P-F, is funds that come from the state for to reimburse for...
PEP?
K-L-E-F-P-F.
KLEF.
Yeah.
We call it KLEF.
Okay.
That's money that is given to the city for police to reduce their labor for police costs.
What about GF SUDA?
GF is general fund.
And SUDA?
It's a state unemployment tax. You know SUDA, FUDA? FUDA's federal and SUDA is state.
How's that?
It's because that can't afford it, right? Good thing about those all right there in that same ring, they're all very private and private.
Those are the ones I kept looking at, like, "What in the world?" Sorry, a lot of them's inside.
I know there's gonna be a huge learning curve as we go on, but as far as the funds and everything goes. And trying to find a good time or forum to, for my own knowledge...
Sure.
...of getting a basis for everything.
We expect questions for the first several months.
Right. Because it would definitely, in the council meeting, if we discuss every one of these by line in a meeting, or I can come in sometime and say...
You have to understand that the report that you see is at the end of the month, the last month. This paper right here is where we currently stand. So, we're 17 days into the next month.
Correct.
Okay, so...
From a cash statement, everyone that has one of these. This is the reconciliation from the actual book to the actual bank statement each month for all the accounts from the city. This balance here that will lay out at each meeting is exactly what cash is on hand at the moment before locking this meeting.
Right.
So...
So, this one, just for instance, the water account?
Yes.
Okay.
Where it says a check is out for $83,000, and we have a...
Yes. Okay. So, you know the book balance is a negative 59.
Yeah, that's what I was asking about.
So, what happens is when you pay your water bill, and it's an accounting, when you pay your water bill, you're technically paying water, sewer, and sanitation. It all would go into a water account at the end of each month. That money is divvied out, and sewer gets their revenue, and sanitation gets their revenue. So, what happens is a timing at the end of each month, because at the end of the month, water does not have enough money to fund sanitation and sewer. So, usually, you're waiting to around the first 10 days of the next month to actually fund that. And that has been that way since I've been here.
Right. I guess it's those kind of details that fill in the blank that I can probably just come down and talk to you about sometime.
Actually, George and I already had this conversation, and he would be the first one to ask that question.
That's gonna be me. Thank you. Well, a lot of times, people...
There may be a future mayorhood in this for you.
I don't know about that, but, you know, by virtue of us being here at the table, you know, we all take an interest, and the more information we have, we make it more useful.
Sure. And I'm available any time that anybody wants.
Sure.
I'd be like, I hope you understand.
Right. And as trivial sometimes as the question might come off, it's, you know, it's complicated to me until...
It's not trivial.
No.
So, just, you know, bear with me anyway.
No problem.
I know I speak on the behalf of the county, too, because I'm on the one time.
But you can...
I don't know how you keep up along...
We only provide one of those sheets, so...
This one here?
Yeah. So, you know, the others, look at it, you know, look at it, they can text it around. Any other questions about finances?
I'll just pass it this way, and then I'll come back around.
The first part of the finances is what the budget items look like, and the last part is the checks that we wrote on each account, you know, and they're in the same order, so it'll help you to look through the checks, see if there's one you have a question about, but through the budget page and see if there's some discrepancy or something that kind of sends up a red flag to you.
Well, that's another question I have. When you said budget, I see, and I went through this really pretty thorough, even though a lot of them, I don't know exactly what I'm looking at.
Right.
Is there a budget for different sections, different offices that we fund, you know, like this, the police department? Do they have a budget that they gotta work within?
They're... It should be in here.
Was it built down by...
The city has to have a budget, and it has to either break even or...
Right.
They come out of...
And there is a budget...
But within the city...
They come under general fund. Their part does.
General fund, okay.
Okay.
All right, that's...
But then...
Because that's what I didn't see, and I'm sure I was just looking at it and didn't understand which one of them was. But when it talks about, and I'll use the police again, because that's the one I can relate to the most, but when it's, when we look at the finances for that...
Right.
Do they have an operating budget per se?
It's just, it's all included in the general fund.
It's in the general fund, okay.
The departments or the funds that bring in their own revenue.
Right.
Okay. Water, sewer, cemetery, facial tax, municipal road aid, LGA, which is another road fund. Those have separate budgets because they're bringing in revenue. We should have to show the expenses on it.
Okay.
Other things like, well, the fire department has their own, but they don't generate the revenue, but they have their own separate page there. But maintenance and police come under the general fund budget, so they're paid out of general fund tax dollars, you know? So, they're included into big general fund budgets.
Do they have to put, when they want to buy something, if they need something, anybody that's under the general fund, do they come to you?
All of our supervisors, if there's any expenditure over $250, they have to come and get approval from me. Under $250, most of them are, you know, know what their budget looks like, and they're very cost-conscious about what they're doing. But if they, if they've got a water pump that we've got to have repaired, they'll come up and they'll say, "We've got problems with the water pump, that we just take water out of the river. We've got to send it off, we've got to rent a pump to replace it while it's being repaired," things like that. So, they'll come and get permission. If it's over $2,500, then I have to bring it before the council get approval.
Well, and again, you know, being a novice here, this is a lot to keep up with, so I'm just trying to...
That's probably a pair of the big bucks.
Well, I'm looking, because you're doing awesome, David.
If a department head chooses to spend over $50, they must have a P.O.
Right.
Comparative, I'm sorry, comparative periods last year?
Yes.
And...
You'll know that, but up on the top left-hand side, it's comparing, and by the 2019, what is fiscal year, instead of calendar year, so it's July 1st, 18 to June 30th, 19 is actually your current period.
Okay.
So, your comparative period there, it shows 2018. That's actually July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 18.
In the year-to-date total?
And the year date's exactly the same one. Your current year-to-date would be for 19 and 18.
And since we weren't, we didn't have any visibility to the budget last year, were there any big shifts from this year, last year to this year? Because as long as we're comparing against that, and there's not a huge variance...
For the most part, it's usually the same time.
It's the same year-over-year?
There's little change, you know?
Your major change are your projects that we do, whether it be like a big water project that we just did.
Yeah.
And you'll see that, or we're getting ready to do the sidewalk project in the general fund, so you'll see that.
Okay.
Those are the big ticket items.
But, you know, some of these expenditures, like what we've done last year, there may not have been a big expenditure there, and this year, we had a breakdown that we had a large expenditure for, and it's gonna look like a huge difference in the variance there, so just had to...
We'll be caught up in a year.
You think so?
You don't ever get caught up. We're chasing our tails.
Well, I don't mean by that, as far as, I'm just talking about our knowledge.
Oh.
After a cycle goes by, we'll be catching up.
I would say it's almost like being married to continually learn something new, everybody.
Yeah, new rules daily.
Yeah. All right.
I'll be wrong every time, then.
Any questions? Anytime you've got free time, come up by and ask your questions.
That's probably what I'm gonna have to do, because I don't want to tie everybody up on something that I already know the answer.
That's what they're here for, so...
Are the golf carts permitted per year?
Per...
Golf carts?
Yes.
Per year?
Yeah, sure.
How do we do, how we monitor that? How do we enforce it? Because it's not like a sticker.
I don't know. They get a sticker on those, I think.
They don't have a sticker, but they actually have their permit that they have to keep on the cart.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. The police are the ones who...
Right. But it would be hard, because they'd have to have probable cause, just like pulling you over and asking for your driver's license.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But if, but if you don't have a license plate on your car, that's probable cause.
Right.
So, if there was a sticker, then they could definitely enforce it. Otherwise, I don't see how they can enforce it unless there was another...
They pretty much know who has been okay, you know, who's, because there's not that many really in town.
Right.
There ought to be. There ought to be a whole bunch.
Yeah, there's a lot of golf carts out there.
Yes, there are.
But you see that are out here on the streets? I don't see but one or two down where I live, so...
Oh, they're all over, George. Got to roam the city.
And if there was a sticker...
Is there anything in there, rules about being out on the streets at night in golf carts?
Hmm, I can't tell you that.
We'd have to review the orders.
Well, now, they're not allowed on the state or federal highways, right?
No, any, any street that has a 35 mile, higher speed limit, they can cross it at the closest point.
Right.
But that's their limitation. They can't be out there on it, too.
I didn't know we had to have stickers for them.
Well, there's not a sticker required.
It's not a sticker, that's what he's talking about. It's just your...
But that's why you can't enforce it, because it doesn't have a sticker. Well, it's difficult to enforce it, because they can't just pull you over.
Yeah. Mr. Councilman, it does require a permit to have a golf cart on the streets in Hartford.
Even if you have a sticker, you still don't know who's driving it.
I rode mine around for two years. I didn't know it.
All right. Remind me to tell Leroy to...
I know Leroy, way back.
All right. Any more questions? We digress. We digress. Any more questions about the finances here?
I have finances here. I don't know enough to really ask you.
No, I should.
But I do trust leases, though.
But not me.
But you know how to make your eight, so now, don't you?
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the financial reports as they've been presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
Second. Anybody? Any discussion, any more discussion about it? Okay. All in favor of adopting those? Thank you. All right. We'd now go to the old business, and the first item we have listed is water asset management. The question was brought up, I can't remember, I guess it was last year that was brought up about looking into acquiring an asset management company to take over the water plant, water distribution, and collection. And so, we contacted a management company. I think tonight, what you have, two things. First thing you have to consider is, do you want a water asset management company? Do you think that is a benefit for the people of Hartford to have a water asset management company? I think that's the first thing you have to determine. And then, the second thing would be, you know, just who is that water management company? At any time, this discussion could be tabled for consideration at a later date, if you think you would like more information, just you'd have to let us know what information it is that you need. We've tried to provide you with a set of numbers. What we have done there with that is over the past, well, you have, in your packet, you have the report about the water department. And what, this is a six-month report. We've, this is six months into the fiscal year. And so, what we have done is we have gone through both the revenue and the expenses, and have tried to determine, first of all, what revenue is going to be available to us, and secondly, what expenses are we going to have to be responsible for? And so, we have calculated, what you have there is a calculation of the revenues expanded out to a year, and the expenses that we feel like we'll be responsible for. And we've subtracted, and that gives us the available, what we feel like is the available funds for utilizing a water asset management company. Now, do you understand what I'm saying? We just tried to figure out what our net is that we would have available, that they would assume.
So, just so I'm clear, I was here for that, that meeting?
Yes.
And, and I got a couple of comments for that, and that we can talk about, but what you're saying just now, though, is our, these expenses would be in addition to if we went with that water management company?
Well, right. There are certain things that they don't cover, and they're here that we could ask them for sure, to make sure. But there are certain things, like we have a bonded indebtedness that we have to pay on the bonds on previous water projects.
Right. But we're gonna have to pay that regardless of what we do, right?
Exactly.
So, to me, since we gotta pay that, if we, whether we go with them, don't go with them, or go with something else, that's always gonna be there. I'm not real sure that that even is a...
And that's what we tried to do, is in the expenses, find those topics that are like that, that we know, we're gonna have to pay the payroll, the water clerk, we're gonna have to pay her salary, all the benefits that we pay her, we're gonna have to pay for the postage and the printing of sending out our bills.
Okay.
Those are the kind of things that we've tried to...
Calculate on...
Exactly.
Okay. Now, we, they also mentioned some of the senior city guys that would be affected if we went with the company.
How do we mean affected now?
About for retirement, they're close to retirement.
Okay.
So, we would keep them?
And they would be still getting their retirement. We would, what we would do is basically lease them to the management company.
Gotcha. Okay, I remember that thought.
They would still be, we would still be responsible for paying their, well, we...
All their friends.
They would, they would take care of it. They would take care of it, but they would pay our lease, which in turn would pay for their retirement for the last year or two, whatever it is they had.
And for everyone else that didn't fall into that, that would be absorbed or hired by this company, right?
Right.
Is that what I understood? How did they feel about it? Have we talked to them?
I've had comments from different ones. Like everything else, I think they're apprehensive about going to a different system from what they're doing now.
Sure.
You know, as anybody would be, I think.
Was there anybody dead set against it, say, "I don't like it"? Because they wasn't here for the meeting, some of them. Some of them might have been, I don't know, but I'd be curious to know that. I actually, after that meeting, took down some of their information and actually called the little town up in, where was it? Hartsburg?
Hartsburg.
Just to, just to get an idea, just tell them I'm an incoming guy, and that was kind of a favorable phone call for the water company. And being out of compliance is not favorable. I would, I was kind of leaning towards favorable, you know, looking at going with that. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't at a point where I could say yes, let's do this, because I don't have enough information, obviously. There's a lot of unknowns for me. But I think, as far as my opinion is, it, I think it would be in our best interest to look into it more, maybe more aggressively.
They're available if you want more information, if you'd like to contact them and talk with them at more length, you know?
Well, that also needs from us, you know, what we're putting together, what you've already put together.
Right.
And try to dial in that number better.
Okay.
Mayor, could I...
Yes, you can.
I'm David Wakefield. I met, I was with Veolia, I'm the regional manager for Kentucky and Tennessee. And originally, how this started was the mayor and council were looking at alternatives. I know they looked at purchasing water possibly from Ohio County, different options, because there are some major issues on the table that's been long-term issues. The TTHMs and HAAs, which are carcinogens that are makeup, that are in the water system. And you've been in violation for that since it started, like in 1993, going back and looking at the compliance record. I know there's new KRS that just came out, where they're gonna stop just making you send that letter out to your customers, whether it's every month or every quarter. They're gonna really start cracking down and enforcing the systems that have been in violation over years to do something.
You wouldn't happen to know that KRS?
I don't offhand, but it just passed, and I can find out for you. But it's basically to be able to put more teeth in the EPA's enforcement to make sure that municipalities and water districts are serving safe drinking water to their customers. So, basically, what they're gonna do then, they're gonna come in and say, "Okay, you know, you've been in violation, we make you send these letters out, you're gonna have to come out with a dead-set plan, either go with a contract management company, whether it be Veolia, somebody else, or purchase water from another system that's in compliance." So, that's what it's gonna come to eventually. But you have more issues than just the violations. You have over a 50% water loss. So, you're producing 10 million gallons a month, and you're only selling 5 million gallons a month. So, that's a major issue. We think we put together a very comprehensive, cost-effective plan, and this is not just a guesstimate or estimate. When they, when the council ask us, and the mayor ask us, we basically, we brought experts in from throughout Veolia, brought them up from Florida, we brought our HR director in even to meet with the employees, so we could kind to, because they had a lot of questions. You know, nobody likes change. And so, they had a lot of questions and concerns, so we brought our HR partner in from Tampa, and he met with all the employees and told them, showed them, laid everything out, exactly what our benefits were and how compared to the city's benefits. So, they're all fully aware of that. We also, in our, this proposal is a guaranteed price bid. This is a bid, okay? It's a guaranteed price. It's not an estimate. So, and this will only change based on, on an annual basis. If we were able to come to an agreement, and we write a contract, and we'd say, "This is your guaranteed price, you know what you're gonna spend," we'd write that contract up to where if, once we slow down this water loss and get this water loss under control, there would be a calculation in our contract that would reduce our fee. Because if we're not having to produce as much water, our costs are gonna be less. So, there's gonna be plus, minus, 10%. Like, if we go the whole year and we decrease the flow by 10%, then there's a calculation to reduce, or decrease our fee in that. And the only other change in the fee would be based on, we would agree on a CPI calculation, where that CPI generally, instead of your general all-purpose CPI, would be like water, sewer, and trash CPI, and we would plug that into the contract, and whatever that CPI was, that would be the only thing that we could raise our contract annually, whether that CPI is 0.7% or whether it's 2.5%. So, that's, that's how our contract would be based upon. So, as far as the violations, when we first went to Hartsburg, they were in the same boat. They, they were out of violation on both TTHMs and HAAs. They were on the same source water. same source water at that time, on Rough River. And so we have not only just our local people at Hardinburg, but we got them in compliance and we know how to do it. And we also have water experts that we can call out from throughout Veolia, uh, that will assist us if you, if you hire us to manage your facilities. Out of all the facilities I manage, we've been, the least amount of time we've been in there is 1995. So we've been at least 23 years at all the facilities I manage. So if we weren't doing a good job, they wouldn't keep renewing their contract with us. So, um, we think this is very cost-effective. We reviewed all of your financials. We put months of work into putting together this document and it covers everything. All the costs, all employee costs, all chemical costs, you know, uh, lab supplies. It, it covers all costs. There's a $72,000 a year maintenance budget in there for any items that are under $2,500, which would be capital that we would come back to you for, if there was a capital expenditure that needed to be made. But anything under $2,500, pump goes down, we need to fix it today. We got a $72,000 a year, $6,000 a month maintenance budget built into this total number. Okay? So you know upfront what you're gonna spend. And that, that $72,000 is a no markup, no margin, whatever we spend, we spend. If we don't spend at all, we rebate it back. If we go over, then we bill you. So it's, this is a very close number. We've been doing this for a long time and we think it's very fair. And we know you guys are new. We spent quite a bit of time with the last council. I know Jerry and the other Jerry and the mayor also came up to Hardinburg. They met with the Hardinburg mayor where we've been since 1995. So they know, they toured our facilities. They know what kind of facilities we run there. I think Jerry would tell you it's a top-notch, well-run facility.
It was. I was very impressed with it.
So I know it's gonna be very difficult for you to make a decision on a contract that you're not familiar with it. So my suggestion would be, if you wanna designate two or three of you, we'd be more than glad to have a workshop set down, go through every piece of this, answer all of your questions. That's all I would ask, that you fully vet our contract before you make a decision on it. Because it could benefit, well, it definitely will benefit, but it will definitely affect the direction of your community and your water system, uh, going forward and the responsibility to your constituents and your customers. Thank you.
Pretty much had you. Questions I was gonna ask, so. I think that's a good idea. I don't know how y'all feel about it.
I agree.
Look more into it. Go over these numbers here and actually sit in on one.
Their, their contract is for $797,000.
Write a check. Here we go around here. No, I'm just kidding. Seven, so what was that?
$797,000.
Did you not get a copy of?
Three, 338.
Aren't they handed out the last time?
Uh, no. I, I was here for the, the meeting, but I didn't, I didn't copy what they handed out.
I think the own-in portion of that contract was like 724 or something, the $72,000.
Yeah, 72 was the, the.
Maintenance.
Maintenance contract.
And that also included a, a three and a half percent increase. Uh, we calculated all the employees at their current salary and plugged in a three and a half percent raise for all the employees from day one. And I don't think they've received a raise for the last couple of years.
Oh, I got you. You had it on there. I see it now. It's already on there.
You know, in defense of our operators, uh, this past time, you know, we, we did, uh, pass inspection as far as our THM and HAA. So we were under the limits there. So uh, winter time's a little better time to pass those tests than maybe summertime. But, and part of the flushing that we have to do is because of our large storage tank. It's a problem. And hopefully within the next year or two, we can engineer a solution to reduce the volume of that tank somehow, to use just the upper half or so to reduce down the amount of flushing that we have to do. The flushing is just because of the chlorinated water coming in, mixing with water that's been in there for a while, getting in the lines. And then we have lower chlorine, chlorine than what we need. And so that's why we have to flush, is try to keep the chlorine level up in the lines.
So this 797, does it reduce, does it relieve us of some of the other financial?
No, we still have things like Sarah's payroll, her benefits, posting, spreading, our bonded indebtedness, all those things that we've got, that we've called out.
How much does it relieve us of?
Um, we'd have to.
That's what I, yeah.
You'd have to subtract that number that was given to you from this water statement here. Okay, our total expenses for six months is $391,000.
Right.
All right. We've calculated on there what you, we'd still be responsible for.
Even with them, so which one, which one is this that we were still?
Right here, the water expenses.
Okay, so we're still responsible for that even with this?
Mm-hmm.
After paying the.
Mm.
So you're, so we're gonna add this to this? Is that what you're saying?
Mm-mm.
I'm saying, once these guys come in.
Oh, yeah, I know what you're saying. Yeah, that's what, that's what they would cost us.
Right.
And that's too high right there.
Right.
Um.
So they would absorb some of this?
Of course, this is six months.
Right.
This, oh, this is six months. You take this number and.
And double it?
Double it. And then subtract off what we've got there.
All right. Let me get that number real quick. So we're taking that number?
Taking that number there.
391.
And double it. That'd be our expenses for the whole year.
So it's 500,000.
And we've calculated, this is what we would be responsible for. So you take that off of that.
Okay.
And that would be money that in essence would be available to pay for that. My accountant and I get into, we've come in from different directions.
Right. Right.
Right.
But that's okay. That's good. That's what you.
And I'd just like to say.
Yeah.
That we're in no way diminishing the job that your operators are doing. We'd be happy to have them all as employees.
Right.
They're doing the best they can with the resources they have. And when we reduce this water loss, that's gonna be a huge savings, uh, for the city.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, which, go ahead.
I do have a question. So what is the track record related to water loss reduction in your other?
Well, at, at Hardinburg, we, we serve the entire county and both the other two incorporated cities and our water loss is under 15%. That's, that's an acceptable rate.
But year one, was it 10% improvement? What, what's the improvement?
I don't have those exact numbers, but I know it was, I don't have the exact numbers.
Well, they had, at Hardinburg, they had a system about like the one we have here. And they have gone to a different system. Apparently they use a reverse osmosis plant. Uh, it's the only one in the state that a municipality has. And they have, they're getting well water. They're not getting water out of, uh, river like we do. So there's a lot of, uh, there's some difference.
And we've grown that system too. I mean, when, when we first went there, they had 90 miles of distribution system. Now they have 427 miles.
They've beaten the whole county.
But we've helped them plan throughout. We've held their hand through all that planning and growth and.
But it's, it's, it's a, there's two different types of, two different systems, you know? Where they were getting water out of Rough River reservoir, much like the water we get out of Rough Creek. They're now getting them out of, the water that's coming out of wells.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So there's a difference in the makeup of the two water sources. So.
Well, the well water would be easier to treat then.
Yeah, we can't do it though. I've already looked into it. All our water's too high in iron content to be usable.
Well, you do have, your treatment system, that's your water plant, is what's called an active flow system. And that's a Veolia water technology. That's our technology. So we operate many other active flow plants in the south, all over the country. And we can optimize that. That's a good, that's a good process. And we can optimize that process that doesn't give it compliance. But that is our technology.
And Hardinburg was in the same shape that you all are in now. Before they had reverse osmosis, they had a surface water plant that was on the same source. They were out of compliance for TTHMs and HAA's and Veolia was able to bring that plant into compliance.
Well before we moved to a new facility on the library.
So we, we've been there. We've handled the same source. Uh, and we know what to do to bring it into compliance.
And there's a lot of changes that would be made and we've calculated a lot of that in. Now this price also, uh, and I don't wanna take up too much of your time, but, um, this price also includes about $140,000 of things that we're gonna need to do, like sledge removal out of your systems where you just, the system's just packed full of sledge. And your back horse wagons are full of sledge. Um, so there's some equipment that needed to be brought in and some different things. So, and by doing that, by pricing that into our contract for a 10-year term, we're able to spread those costs out over the 10 years of the contract, which really makes it feasible.
So not, not only water, but you're handling sewer?
We're handling a collection system as well.
Right.
Only two points.
The pain is to the regional wastewater is still our baby.
Yeah.
But we hope, we hope to help you reduce your iron eye.
Right.
Because all your rainwater that's getting into your system, you're paying the regional plant to treat. So, and you also have about eight miles of collection system that you don't have any, um, that you don't have any, uh, way of knowing what's going on there. Because your master meter's eight miles before it gets to the plant.
Right.
So we would work on, we have all kinds of, uh, uh, roving cameras that go into sewers and different wastes to, uh, re, help you reduce your iron eye, which would be included in this too. So that could reduce your overall cost that you're paying the regional plant to treat your sewage.
So we're, we're still paying a regional plant for the sewage and we're also making a payment on sewer?
Bonds.
Right. Which that's gonna be there regardless. So.
For the next 40 years.
Yeah.
Wow. Uh, well, since this is a, one of the hotter topics, I think we ought to spend the most time on that. So I.
I think our best place to start, I don't know about you fellas. I haven't spent a great deal of time with our employees at the water plant.
Right.
I'd rather start with them and see what their feelings are.
Oh, definitely.
With them on a number of issues and, um, yeah, and I, if you haven't seen a copy of the, of the proposal, and then I don't know, is, is there a legal issue? Tara's not here, but of entering into any working relationship.
Oh, we've.
Over a certain amount of money.
We've looked into it. The current opinion attorney general is that it's a professional fee that as much as you would hire a doctor or an artist, uh, it's a professional fee is not covered under the $20,000 requirement.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you got to go up to the plant up there?
Yes.
What did you think of it? Cause I.
I wish we had the plant down here, but unfortunately we can't do it. It's, you know, it's a, what was it, $7 million plant at, uh, 2 million gallon a day capacity. And it's not, they don't do anything near capacity and feed the whole county, you know? So I'd be glad to take you up there if you wanted to talk with the mayor and anybody else that could get away.
Right. Well.
They monitor what the plant's doing from their house with their computers and phones and stuff and.
But it's, that's a system that's totally out of our.
It is.
So, uh, would you all prefer to table this until next month and then give you a chance to?
Yeah.
Yeah, we definitely.
Okay. Then I entertain motion to table this item. Okay.
A second.
All right. All in favor of table this? All right. We'll leave that then. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, please contact me. Uh, be happy to set up a workshop with you or you can just come up and visit us up there. Um, but that's all I would ask, that you fully vet, uh, our proposal. Uh, and if you don't do something with us, I would hope that you would have a plan to go forward, um, for the, for the sake of the community. And I know if you come to Hardinburg, I know it's totally different now, but they were exactly in your shoes financially, plant-wise, when they hired us in 1995. And I would like to think that we had, uh, some impact on the improvement and the growth they've had over the years with our, with our help and our leadership. And we don't have any control. We don't own anything. We just manage it for you. We don't have any control over your rates. That's all. You guys, we, we don't wanna own it. We're just a professional management company. And that's how, that's how we do our business, is long-term contracts. And we, we have to keep our clients viable or we can't keep those long-term contracts. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming down.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to the next item, Priest House. Um, Arthur owns a, a house over here. We own a house over here behind the water plant. Okay. Uh, it's where Wayne Helen Priest lived. And, um, we have, it belongs to us. And so, uh, we had one of our policemen living there. We actually have had two policemen living there at different times. Uh, one of the latest policemen that lived there has moved out, bought a house over at Beaver Dam. And so the question becomes, what do we wanna do with the house? So I've asked Roger Emery to, to kinda give us an idea about what he thinks the house is worth, um, the possibility of, what would be the possibility of selling it or the possibility of renting it. Uh, he's looked at the house. Of course, the house is an older house. Uh, he thought that it probably is gonna require at least 20, $25,000 worth of work. Uh, basement is kind of, wall is kind of buckling a little bit. Um, but, uh, you know, it is a serviceable house. It's got a good heating and cooling system in. It's got a good roof on it, a fairly recent roof. Uh, he thinks that if we sold it, we could probably put it on the market for about, roughly $45,000. Um, we have a, an employee at the water plant who would like to rent the house. Uh, there's a distinct advantage for us to rent the house out to a water plant employee operator because in case of emergency within walking distance of, of the plant. Um, rent-wise, we were getting about $300 a month with a stipulation that if the renter did any repairs, replaced faucets, painted, uh, did anything to the house to help improve the house, we would deduct that from the rent. That's the old plan was. Uh, I'm open for whatever y'all want to decide. Um, David?
I'd say on that house too, we, uh, got a gate back there that comes from the water department. Cause I mow back, used to mow back in there. And the house is over here and the access to that is coming out of the water department. So if you sold it, you would be, that right-of-way would still go to the city.
Yeah. We have trucks, we have some delivery trucks that pull up in there and there's no place to turn around. They just open a gate and that truck comes out the driveway of that house. It's a little convenient if we sold it and didn't, uh, have any kind of an agreement with them. We wouldn't have that opportunity. So, um.
I personally think that the shape Hartford is in, being a landlocked community, that we need to hang on to that property, period.
Well.
And if someone.
Right.
Like Josh wants to live in it, I think we should rent it to him.
Okay.
Because I think it's better to have someone in a house. And even if we have to go up and shore that wall, if there's any damage as far as the outside structure.
The basement is the worst, the worst part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, like I said, it would take quite a bit. And like I said, it would take quite a bit to do that. I don't know if we have to do it right now, but we'd have to do it probably one of these days. But, you know, he's ready to move in right now if we wanted to rent it, and that would be my recommendation to you is that we rent it for that same deal of 300 a month and any improvements would be deducted from the $300.
I make the motion as stated.
Okay. All right, now then, just have discussion about the motion, if you have any discussion about it.
So rent stays at 300?
Pardon?
Rent stays at 300 unless he is to repair.
Right. And we would deduct, he would have to produce receipts to show that, you know, whatever he'd expended had been...
Would that pay the taxes and insurance on it?
Pardon?
Would that 300 a month pay the taxes and insurance on it?
We're doing that now anyway, it's covered under the city's policy. All of our, all of our buildings and everything is covered under that. So it's really a drop in the bucket when you consider what all we're insuring.
There's a difference between repair and design.
Yeah, right.
And so it would have to be, some sort of repair would be brought to us.
Anything to improve the value of the house.
Right.
Like if he painted.
Right.
Okay.
I have part of a few plans for that. You know, the outside...
Oh, I want you in there. But if we're going to put it in the, in a...
Right. We'd have to draw up a, and it would have to include things like you would have to be notified that any asbestos, any lead paint, or anything like that would, it would be your...
Right.
All right. Any more discussion regarding that? All right, seeing none, if you're in favor of that, signify by the uplifted hand. All right, everybody's in this on that. Thank you. The next item says sewer reimbursement. We placed a, we had to do a sewer project out off, just off Carlisle Road, actually it's between Maiden Lane and, you all come learn where all the city streets are.
Carlisle's going up to the hospital. Going up there.
But it's between Maiden Lane, which is the first street after, behind Bob's, it's a street, not an alleyway, and Charlotte, okay? Between there, we've had problems. It's an old sewer line, it was designed poorly, there's no drain to it, so what we've done is we've gone in and placed two new manholes and connected to the existing line on Carlisle Road. That work was done by Luttrell's son. It cost us $20,000. The money comes out of our sewer fund, but we try to utilize the occupational tax to pay, our occupational tax fund. In the past, we've utilized it to help pay for infrastructure cost, things like sewer lines, water lines, sidewalks, anything like that, we've used the occupational tax for that. And so what I would like to recommend is that we take $20,000 out of the occupational tax fund to reimburse the sewer fund and leave it where it is. Because it was a sewer project, it has to come out of sewer. But we tried maybe to build the sewer back up, sewer fund back up by taking it out of occupational tax, which we have a lot more of it than we do the sewer fund. So that would be my recommendation to you, if you want to make a motion to do that, fine. If you don't, that's fine. Okay?
I make a motion that we take it out of the occupational tax and transfer it into the sewer fund.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Okay, now discussion about it. Any questions, discussion, anything like that?
When you transfer a fund from one fund...
Right.
Again, bear with me there, and I apologize for my ignorance on a lot of this stuff here, but I'm really, I care about it, like everybody else does, and I'm trying to understand it. And make sure we do the right thing as far as legally.
Right.
And I'm retired, I don't need to be in the pokey for something. So, but, so how do you do, how do we do that? Is it, since it's all Hartford funds anyway?
Well, it's just a bookkeeping, it's a bookkeeping thing.
It's a bookkeeping thing, okay.
Accounting thing.
Right.
Because...
So we're not going to keep somebody from their pension because we transferred their money from the, okay?
It's like you said, when the occupational tax was instituted, it never was strictly specified for what it was spent, to be spent.
Right.
But I think past councils have always said that we would use that money to take care of infrastructure, and that covers a broad area of expenses. Sewer funds can only be used, well, we use that to pay regional wastewater primarily, that's what that fund is used for.
Right.
So if we take money out of that to do the sewer project, which it was a sewer project, that reduces the amount of money we've got available for the regional wastewater. So we try to replenish that back up with the money that came in to pay regional wastewater, you know, from people's water bills, so that we've got the resources to pay our regional wastewater bill every month. And then we use this occupational tax to do the infrastructure project that went through the sewer. Now, if it was a water project, we had to lay a water line, we would do the same thing with the water budget, you know? We would try to reimburse water for the expenses of land and water line or do the sidewalk project. You know, we've got a sidewalk project coming up, and there'll be some in-kind work and money that we have to expend as our share of doing the project, you know? We can't get a full grant to do the whole project, we can't get funding to do the whole project, we only get maybe 80%. So the rest of that is up to us, and we can settle some of that by doing in-kind work. Like we might demolish the sidewalks ourself and haul it off.
Right.
That saves contractors' expense, you know? So that's our, okay. But there may be some things that we do with the sidewalk project that we don't have a sidewalk maintenance fee or fund.
Right.
That's general fund. So if we take it out of general fund, we need to take the occupational tax and reimburse general fund for the infrastructure.
I'm clear on that, I'm just making sure we're...
That's all we're doing is just, it was because that occupational tax has always had, we've always had the impression, it's never been designated, but we've had the impression that it was to be spent, you know, on infrastructure. That way we could do things that wouldn't require grants or go through a big contract or whatever else. It's still, if it's over $20,000, we still have to bid the project, you know? But paying for it, we've got, we've always used too, occupational tax is kind of a savings resource for us, like if we're short on payroll, which we will be probably in later months of our budget year, maybe in June, we might be, end up short.
Right.
And so what we would do is we would go and borrow from the occupational tax and try to pay that back once we get our tax dollars in, you know, when those come in, so...
We're going to come up with some revenue idea.
Well...
Well, you all contribute to the occupational tax, when they pay you for your monthly fee for here, they take part of it back, so this is occupational tax.
Sure, I'd give it all to you.
Because we're working in a city...
Making me nervous, Rick, I'll give it all to you.
But that, maybe try, it's a convoluted system of having all these different funds. You've seen the funds.
I've seen that, yeah. I'm like, wow.
And it's just, it's the way, we have to simplify. Our auditors require us to try to keep as best of track, record of what we spend and take in, and that's the best way that our accountant can handle it.
Easiest way to think of it is think of a fund as a business. Every single fund is a separate business. You have financials, you have budget, the whole, you're buying for every single fund.
All right.
Occupational tax is kind of like our savings fund over here, really. All right.
We need to vote.
Yeah, I do. Is more discussion about it? Okay, that's fine. All in favor of transferring that money, signify by the uplifted hand, thank you. Motion's carried.
Second. That's the second piece on it.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get to that. Okay. In order for us to gain a right-of-way to a backyard, we were going to go through a storage building, a little storage barn, eight by 12, and it had been there so long that we could not move it, it would fall apart. So in order for us to get the right-of-way, we had to promise that we would replace her barn, it cost us $1,896. It's an eight by 12 storage building, and...
You want to go through that?
I'd like, I'd like a motion to allow us to take that money out of occupational tax as well because as part of this sewer project, it was not the contract with Luttrell's, but it was the part that gave us the right-of-way to enter into the contract with Luttrell's. So I'd like a motion that we pay that out of occupational tax as well.
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Stay here to second it.
All right, is there any discussion to this? It's the cheapest barn we could find. I'm sorry. She was very gracious to let us do it, you know? Sometimes people don't want their yards torn up. Luttrell does a great job of putting it back, but it's still, it's just not like a barn and her shed, we had to move it because that's, other side of that was where the main manhole was going, so had to go right through the shed, so. Is there any discussion regarding that? Okay, if you're in favor of doing that, uplifted hand, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, we come to new business. First thing you see is Dude's Solutions.
Yes, I want to know about this.
You want to meet the dude?
Yeah, I want to meet the dude.
All right. I got a call the other day from a company in North Carolina. Dude's Solution provides access to software that's in the cloud. We don't, we wouldn't have it downloaded on our computers or anything like that. But it's a system that, on this software, it does the same thing just about that VOA was going to do, except there's no, they don't have in their manpower or trucks or anything involved. What it would do is that it would provide a record, it would give us a schedule of routine maintenance. It would allow us for any repairs, to enter repairs into this record-keeping system. It, it gives us a guideline, whether we go with VOA, whether we go with this, whether we have just a checklist on a clipboard. I'm trying to initiate a routine maintenance schedule for our water plant, so that once every day, once every week, once every month or quarter or year, whatever it is, whatever needs to be done, is checked off, somebody takes the responsibility of doing that. And basically what it would amount to is every day when the operator comes in, they would take care of whatever their first immediate task is, and then sit down at a computer, they would log on, they would go down through this day, whatever day it is, it would have, this is the maintenance that needs to be done today, or this is, if there was a repair that was done, then that person would enter in all the information about the repair. That it's just a, well, I can read to you what their promotion says, it's a cloud-based maintenance system. Cloud-based, of course, for a person like me that's...
Hard don't imagine that.
Used to call the operator, called the operator in the past, you know, with no dial or anything like that. But it's, it's access to a software program that's available to us. It'll have, it'll help us to, it says to initiate, to assign, and to track the progress of the maintenance work orders, to manage our assets and equipment, do preventive maintenance, document management, report. They'll be able to do it off of an iPad. What we're trying to do is get into a regular routine system of doing the required management at the plant. He told you that we've got a pre-treatment basin down here, it's underneath the fluorescent lights outside under that canopy. The raw water comes in, sodium permanganate's added there, and it circles around and comes in and enters into the plant from there. Is that right? Okay.
The draining is taking.
Yeah. The basin is 10 feet deep, it's filled up with seven feet of sludge right now, okay? The water coming in has the permanganate introduced, but it doesn't stay in this basin long enough for the permanganate to have the opportunity to work like it should.
Because it's supposed to be 10 feet.
Yeah, it's supposed to be a lot of water in there, slowly going out instead of three feet of water that's going out too fast. Okay. That, that's a maintenance problem.
Right.
It can be done, they don't have to call in special equipment, we've got the capabilities.
Well, with the roof being on there, it has made it really hard.
But he can take a fire hose to a small hydrant we've got there, and we can shut the water off, let it go down, and we can flush it out, and it goes into the...
The backwater lagoon.
Backwater lagoon.
There's another problem right there.
Yeah, yeah, because they need to be cleaned out because they're too full.
Yeah.
That will require equipment probably, but...
Can we do it for less than $797,000?
We'll get it done.
But that's what I'm saying.
That seems like the primary, yeah.
If we'd had the routine maintenance schedule, then every month or two or three, they would say it's time to clean out, and, you know, it don't be only a foot deep at that time. It would take as long as it's going to take to clean out seven feet of it using a hose, you see? So that's what I'm trying to get to, is, you know, we get started doing something else and we forget about the things that need to be done.
Right.
Okay. This way, somebody would sit down, once they got the water started or whatever it is that they need to do first thing to get everything operating, then they can sit down at the computer and say, okay, it's time to, to clean out the pre-treatment basin, okay? So they would know that after they get the water taken care of today, then shut, shut the water off, like they got the tank full, shut the water off, go in there and clean out the basin, be done with it, you know, and a lot less time it's going to take to do seven feet.
And the purpose of having the lagoons and everything was to reduce our waste management cost, right?
Well, the backwash lagoons are whenever the filters get...
Because we're paying, how's it working right now? It's not, is what...
Well, it is, it's just that we've let the car go too long without an oil change.
Right.
You know, that's what we've done, something like that.
But if we can get it started then...
Right, because we're paying, we're paying a payment, like you said, for the next four years, for what?
That's for the work that has been done, like whenever the plant was, whenever the plant was refurbished this past year, whenever we added new lines to get rid of dead-end lines in town, whenever we did the routine refurbishing of the big water tank, you know, those are things that had to be done. They, I mean, it'd been 26 years since the plant had ever had anything done to it, 20 years since the water tank had been painted, you know?
So who's handling our sewer right now as far as, who's processing our sewer?
All of, all the sewage is going down to regional wastewater.
Regional wastewater.
Right. And we need to put a valve in down here at the last location when it leaves our pump station down here, we need to put a meter there to meter what we're sending down to the plant, in case we've got lines broken down through there that we're paying for and that, which is water coming in.
I guess my bottom-line question is, why hasn't that happened yet? Or is that still in discussion?
Let me explain something to you before George became mayor.
Okay.
I was on a committee to serve with a couple of past council members, and we went into that thoroughly, but at that time, the mayor was not willing to take the responsibility to... But at that time, the mayor was not willing to take the responsibility to do that.
Okay.
Because, I don't know what his reasons were, I didn't even see that. But we talked about that. I've got more information on that sewer system sitting on my computer home than I...
Sure.
Will ever understand if I live another hundred years. You notice I said another.
I didn't say a word.
We'd wonder about that.
But it, it, he's totally right. We just haven't done it. Nobody really wanted to do it, and nobody thought it was that important.
Seems like it's going to be, though.
Oh, it is. It already is. That regional sewer treatment plant is...
And, and the benefit of having our own meter, uh...
Right here. Right here, at least, yeah.
Well, yes, yes, yes. And it's about the same way with the water system.
Right.
I spoke to Lonnie up here, he's the regional manager of the plant. And he said if they had that down there, it would cut down and they would know what was going over there to the water. They could control it.
That's what I'm...
Yeah, exactly. And that was recommended.
Right.
Get that meter in.
We're supposed to be about the solutions. We identify the issues, and then we come up with a solution. We can't kick that can down the road for another ten years or something.
No, that's right.
We need to identify it.
Right.
Make a decision on it, and fix it.
Yeah.
I'm all about that.
Right.
Let's do that.
Saving money is what we're out there.
Yes.
So, I mean...
So, the...
The software...
The request, so the C, it's like a CMMS system, where it's maintenance management.
Yeah.
So, is this the only solution that we've looked at? Or, because I know there's lots of them on the market.
Right, this is the one that was presented to us. Uh, I bring it to you, see if you're even halfway answered. If you're interested in it, I can go search out more system like this one.
Yeah, I think you should entertain different options.
This one, this one costs...
You can't run a plant without a good...
Right.
Management system.
Well, I had talked to the engineer when we were redoing the plant down here. And I had told him, you know, what I'd like to have is just a simple checklist. You don't want a clipboard, you know? And this is the check for today, or this month, or, you know, it's going to be a lengthy list. He hasn't done it yet, you know, because it is such a lengthy list, and it's, it's pretty involved. This software is already, it's already got everything on it. You know, every task that needs to be done. In fact, it's got some things that we, we don't have, you know, that we wouldn't pay attention to. And we can also add anything to it that we have that doesn't, that's not on this list. But I would say the list is pretty comprehensive because it's, it's quite lengthy. And, you know, several pages. And, of course, at the end of the year, or at the end of any period, you get a report about, here's the repairs that were done. This is how much it cost us, you know? And so, it's a, a reporting system as well as the reminder of the maintenance system. The software is twenty-six hundred dollars a year, which is really cheap for something like that.
About dropping a bucket, yeah.
Long way, seven hundred and something.
Seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, yeah. Okay, Josh.
I would ask that y'all consider something like that. You know, let us, you know, with that software, you know, let, you know, let us, especially the young ones, you know, come in there and try to manage that, you know, before you get somebody out, you know, that don't know the plant as thoroughly as we do. You know, and know the issues of that plant.
That seems unreasonably cheap.
But would you rather table it like this, I want to give you all time to think about it?
No, I don't think we should for that cost. I think we ought to go ahead and do it and get it implemented.
I think it would be best to look at other options. I think that we should decide, yeah, it's the right thing to do. Is that the right company to go with? Are there other two or three options? I think we should evaluate three bids and say, okay, yep, this is, this one offers us the most.
More bang for the buck.
Yeah, yeah. The price seems about right to me with my experience, so...
We, we did ask the IT people that work with the municipalities what they've seen in their R. Supposedly, they said there were other cities that had, are using something. And they gave us an example of Logan Todd, but then when I called, they're not using anything. They're using Excel to maintain their IT.
They're making their own...
Special...
But, I mean, we're not the only one that has, only city that has a water department.
Mm-hmm, right.
Every little city that has a water plant has the exact same problems that we've got.
Right.
And I'm proud to say that I think ours is functioning as good or better than any of them.
It'd function better if it had seven foot of...
Do what now?
Sludge out there.
Sludge cleaned out.
Yeah.
It'd do better than...
And I think our meter, so we're paying, we're only paying for what we use in that...
Eight thousand dollars, somebody would do it.
I think that would reduce our wastewater cost. At least dial it in to where we know exactly. That way, these numbers here would iron out a little bit.
Yeah. Uh, that's been an ongoing issue for...
I know.
For years with Hartford. Uh, we've tried to rebel, that backfired, I think, in my estimation. Um, we've not had a, how do I say it? All, all is on the same page that are on the board down there.
Right.
Um, there's a lot of unanswered questions, there's a lack of transparency. I think it's very evident.
That's what we need to...
And we've always, we've tried to combat those problems, you know? And it's, it's really gotten us a black eye, uh, but we still try.
Right.
And, uh, uh, maybe until there's some changes down there, we won't see an opportunity to do any improvement.
Down where we saw the treatment, the water treatment plant over in the hill.
See, there's a board that's made up of two representatives from Hartford, two from Center Town, two from Beaver Dam, and one from the county that represents Bluegrass Crossings. And they make, supposedly make the decisions about what takes place down there. A lot of times, uh, you have to question, you know, who's making the decisions down there.
Right.
She's been on the board for a while.
That's what she gets every month, the billing.
Right.
And we get on that board.
Hmm?
And we get on that board.
We've got two on the board, John Ross and, and I'll add another, well, Jeff Martin, we've already okayed him, so thus our two representatives, her husband and John Ross.
Right now, they're offering us a discount from the two ninety-three down there.
Very deep understanding about...
What's going on?
Yeah.
Because we raise much cane with them, because they've got a reserve issue down there.
What mayor, what everybody, what she talks about, everybody probably needs to understand. It's the very last...
Yeah, it's probably the very last thing.
Look at your very last page of your report.
Yeah, I got one.
And that's not Lisa's problem, that it looks like it does, they came like that, she just copied.
Right.
Regional wastewater sends that to us every month. You can look each, it's...
So, regional wastewater handles our wastewater?
Yes, we don't do any more. We used to have lagoons...
Can we do it?
Can we?
We can, but it, it is an expensive process.
Is it seven hundred and ninety-two dollars?
Part of that study, yeah. It would be more than that.
We don't have it.
To clean out the lead's good, you've got to have wastewater treatment operator. You've got to know how to process all of that, chemicals, I mean...
We've got, we've got the plan.
Yeah.
That's already been engineered for a wastewater plant for ourselves to locate down here at where the lagoons are.
Okay.
It's a pretty modern, up-to-date plant. But what we would have to charge the citizens of Hartford to process their wastewater would be possibly the same amount of money. Be pretty close. I'll show you, I'll be glad to show you the plans for that plant at any time.
Yeah, because I'm interested in that, too, because again, it would be, because I'm not familiar with it. You guys are, but...
For us to get the, a plant like that built, we would have to go to the regional water council that's over here at Grad that covers the seven county area. They would have to okay our request for loans and grants and the project to be accepted. Uh, when we tried to initially present this to the people, to them over there, they said, well, what's the problem that you have now that would cause you to do this? And I tried to explain it to them and be as tactful as I could, but they said, well, you need to work out your differences with your regional wastewater because the state is really pushing for more regionalization of both the sewage treatment and the water production.
Right.
They're pushing for that.
They need a better regional rate.
Yeah. But, uh, they do give us a break. Uh, you want to explain our break that we get from regional wastewater?
Well, actually, the, we were on the board when they passed it for six months.
Yeah, we've got it through June.
A thirty cent?
Yeah, the thirty cents is for the June.
So, they're charging us two sixty-three, and, which is probably more reasonable than paying the two ninety-three. And if they, my question is, if you can do that for six months, why can't you do it for the whole year, you know?
Right, right, right.
But, uh...
Because they're processing, one of the other problems was our runoff? Is that what we were talking about?
I know.
It's, uh...
Right.
Water from the top, water from the ground.
And so, we're, we're processing that as well?
Actually, our system is, what do they say, about twenty percent loss or something like that.
Having our own would help fix that?
We, well, you're never going to get a totally sealed system. You're never going to get that, okay?
But we wouldn't charge ourselves for processing the...
Well, see, back when we had the lagoons, we were just, the water was going down there. The more I and I we had coming in, the better it flushed the system down.
Exactly.
See, it was a plus then.
And we didn't charge ourselves for the extra...
Well, there was no charge for, there was no charge for sewage treatment.
But these guys are charging us.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's got to be processed over here before they can turn it back in. What we were doing with the lagoons was it was settling, saddling, and then it was kind of, just basically, that was simplified version of it. It was going into the river.
Right.
And, uh, there was no cost to speak of, and so, we didn't, there was no charge to the people of Hartford.
Right, so it was a lot more reasonable.
But it was entered into as a reasonable thing in case, really, to try to benefit Bluegrass Crossings and say, businesses, industry, you come in here, we can process your waste, whatever it is, with this regional plan, you know? You won't have to have a treatment plan on your own property, that they'll be able to do it down there. So, it was tried, uh, to be a plus for luring industry into Bluegrass Crossings.
Right.
But you see how that's been accomplished?
I am.
The people out there don't use very, but very little water. And what water they've got, some of them are pouring it right back out on their water, and they're on with it, you know, so...
Well, what's always bothered me is the industrial waste that goes through there that has different components than what I produce human...
And to get ours back up operational...
Well, and the thing of it is, if they charge Beaver Dam...
Would never be operational again. They wouldn't go for that system again. It would have to be a system that processes, uh, uses ultraviolet, uh, system to make the, what's going in the river as pure as possible, as clean as possible. So, what was, what they were doing with the old lagoons would not be acceptable today.
So, once we stopped using that, that was...
Well, they stopped using it whenever, if all these cities came together and said, we want the regional plant.
Well, after a lawsuit was filed, and Hartford was under an order to do something.
I see.
And we couldn't do it by ourselves.
The worst thing is that the wastewater plant could have been in Hartford. We could have been reaping the benefit of it.
Wow, right.
But anyway, that's neither here nor there.
That's neither here nor there.
But that's what the monthly report looks like. It tells us what days, how much rainfall we've had. And really, don't try to correlate rainfall with what you pay. If you go over here to this, I've, I've mapped it out. I've charted this stuff on graphs, and...
I tried a little bit today.
And it just does this thing right here, there's no correlation whatsoever.
I mean, and I just used January two years ago to this January, and it, it didn't...
Yeah.
Make any sense at all.
There's no rhyme or reason to it. And that got nothing to do with I and I either.
From one month to the next, you can't look at the tubes, they roll that two inches, and you get four, and you can't figure nothing.
Okay. Uh, the software, we're going to table it, fill the next meeting, and try to see if we come up with some other options, some other similar, okay? Now, you're talking here, basically, three options. Either going with an asset management system, going with the software, or going with the clipboard that the engineer tells us this is what we need to do, you know? So, that's your three, that's three options.
Yeah.
But it gives us a month to...
To weigh this out. I'll be glad to take you up to Hartsburg, show you that system up there.
I'd be interested in seeing.
They do not only the, they do everything up there except the police and fire department. They do all the maintenance, they do the parks, they do the water lines, sewer lines. Uh, they do everything up there, Veolia does, except now, the money that they have coming in from, if you ask the mayor, he'll, he'll tell you that the money they have coming in from their water revenue, sewer revenue, whatever it is, always has to be supplemented with money out of the general fund, you know? It's not enough to cover what the expenses are.
Right, kind of what we're doing right now.
And that's what I think will happen here.
Right, well, we're already doing that, right? Yeah. But that also gives us time because I want to talk to, you know, you folks soon because I take care of y'all first, obviously. Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, so we'll table that to give me a chance to find some other, uh, software options. The next item of business there is cemetery mowing. Uh, in years past, it was one of our employees who used our equipment, our gas, that kept the cemetery mowed and trimmed. And we got to looking at it, and the last year we had that take place, that one of our employees did, it cost us forty-four thousand dollars to keep the cemetery mowed from basically April to October. Okay? So, we decided, well, let's advertise. And we advertised for a company to come in, Jordan Overstreet did this past year. Uh, it cost us, for those same months of mowing, cost us thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. We saved sixty-five hundred dollars in a year's time by, by contracting out the cemetery mowing. I'd like permission to advertise for bids again this year at some time when it's appropriate for cemetery mowing again. Basically, what we would do is they would mow the cemetery once a week. They would trim the monuments half, half one week, half the next week. So, that's where the real expense comes in. If you tried to trim the whole thing by hand, you know, it's what they'd have to do. It cut down quite a bit in a bid, once we went that route, just did half and half. And you really can't tell that much difference, you know, as long as they smoke. So, if it's all right with you, I'd like a motion to enter into or to advertise for bids for cemetery mowing again this year.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, two seconds, all right. Any discussion? Had a lot of positive comments about the cemetery this year, about the job that they did. They do an excellent job. There's always going to be somebody that finds a place between monuments where they skipped it, forgot about it, you know? You're always going to find that, that's going to end up on Facebook or whatever. But for the most part, they did a super job of keeping it looking, uh, looking good. So, any more discussion regarding that? All right, if you're in favor of doing that, up at your hand, thank you. Most is carried. Uh, council contact information. Uh, some of you have means of being contacted by Lisa about any kind of meetings, any kind of decisions between meetings, things like that. Um, we've had requests, uh, it's a good request for a, um, a personal, um, contact with, through the city. We've had requests, it's a good request for a, a personal contact with, through the city, you know, that the city would provide, you explain it.
Each council member would have the opportunity to have their name at HartfordKY.org. Then if you used it only for the city, it would be subject to open records requests.
That's the thing, if you use your personal phone, text, then any city business that comes across that phone means your whole phone is open, you know, for search.
Oh, good, that won't you make a search about.
Well...
I've been wanting the IRS dog to do.
We found out that it cost us how much extra?
It's five dollars a month per email.
It costs an extra five dollars a month for each person who wants an email that is through the city, okay, and conducts city business on. You don't have to do it, you don't want to, it's up to you whether you want it, but if you do want it, it would be available. Also, are you willing to pay the extra five dollars a month per every person who wants it? That's the question. If you are, then we'd entertain a motion to that effect, that you're willing to pay an extra five dollars a month out of the general fund for council members to have a dedicated email address.
Can we just pay it out of our whatever fee that we get? We just pay for our own?
No, it comes out, it would come, the city would pay for it, it'd be a general fund issue. The city would take care of it, paying for it, y'all wouldn't pay for it. I mean, we've already got a contract with a provider, you know, we'd just be adding, I mean, I've got one that says mayor@hartfordky.org, but I have to have because a lot of city business comes in on that, so, but if you'd like one, that's fine.
Now, how much trouble is it for you to use what you've got on us now? I mean, would it be advantageous to you?
You know, there's no trouble, as a matter of, do you want your personal phone to be accessible to perusal by somebody, you know, that comes in and says...
I won't answer it anyway. Yeah, I haven't got anything on it.
But like, you know, if Kenny decides he wanted to do all his business on a dedicated phone or email, then, you know, are you willing to take five dollars, extra five dollars a month and let him do that? You know, that's the question.
Yeah, if he wants to.
Okay, I just have a motion then, if you're gonna allow somebody to do that.
All right, I make the motion that whomever would like to have their name on the city records forever, furnished in the internet, that we pay five dollars for them.
Okay, all right, is there a second to that?
I have a second.
Okay, that's, discussion is, it's just optional, you know?
Oh, it's optional.
If you want it, you don't have, if you want it, we'll pay the five dollars for you. If you don't, you don't have to have it, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, is that okay?
That's fine.
All right, if you're in favor of doing that, up in your hand, thank you. Just let her know if you want, like, have it, she'll set it up for you.
Tony already knows that I call numbers that I don't know. When Lisa's given the first email, I'm like, why didn't he call?
You got my board appointments list right there. All right, there's a bunch of boards and commissions and committees and councils that I have to find people to represent Hartford, so I'm gonna make the following recommendation. Planning and zoning board of adjustments, I'm recommending Vince Tanner, Dee Donlin, and Billy Wood. I'll just do this all at one time. If there's anybody here that you don't wanna be on this board or commission or committee, just let me know, and we'll take them off out of the, out of the motion.
Well, Vince Tanner moving out of town, ain't he?
Do what?
Vince Tanner moving out of town, ain't he?
Well, I don't know, he's bought some property down here off of, off of East Union Street, so they were planning on building a house there, so I don't know.
Well, that, that totally moving on for...
Uh, if he is, then he's no longer eligible to serve, he'll have to resign, I'll have to bring you another appointment. Okay, I'll check with him. So on the Green River Area Development District Council on Aging, I'm recommending Mary Ashford. Planning and zoning committee for the county commission, I'm recommending Neil Grant, Karen Ward, and Cindy Thompson. Thinking of somebody else, okay. Our Economic Development Committee, it has to be made up of two representatives from the council and four representatives that are either citizens of Hartford, business or business owners of Hartford. And I'm recommending off the council Jerry Lichten and Mary Bell because they're already serving on it, all right. Mary Bell is moving over from a citizen standpoint to a council member standpoint or representative.
But if any one of you of us would like to do that, you're welcome to replace them.
And then I have three right now that I'm recommending is Raines Evans, Tony Ward, and Tara Ward, they're, they're already on that, we're just re-upping them. I still have one more to bring for that. And then Ethics Committee, Ethics Board, in case y'all do anything wrong, these will be the people you'd stand before, I'm recommending Judy Moore, Dr. Keith Bennett, and Jerry Bevel for membership on those, on that Ethics Board. That's the ones I have right now, there'll be some others that will come along later, but I'm recommending those to the, to the council, so I need a motion to either accept or if you wanna take anybody's name off, I'd be glad to take their name off and let you find somebody to serve.
I motioned.
Okay, you make a motion, that's your second, second, okay, Eric made that. Any discussion about any committee or... It's tough to find volunteers, folks, especially in some of these, like planning and zoning, where you're gonna make people mad, you know?
Now, do they come to the meetings?
No, they, they go, they have their own meeting, the planning and zoning meets, the commission meets once a month in Beaver Dam at the city hall there. The board of adjustments meets maybe three, four times a year, depending upon, just as needed, you know, if somebody wants a variance on a zoning, or wants a zoning change or something like that, they would go before the board of adjustments. The...
What about annexing, do they do that, like, if we wanted to annex certain locations?
Well, there's a whole process we'd have to go if we wanted to annex some property. And there's been some discussion about doing some corridor annexing up two thirty-one. The little market at Silver Beach, right there, would like to be able to sell alcohol.
That's what I was thinking.
In order to do that, they've got to be within the city limits.
Right.
So we would have to go out, two thirty-one, and annex a strip along the side of the road till we get out to their place, and then go around it.
Right.
Okay, that's corridor annexation. That's, it's gonna be cost prohibitive to do that for just one business out there.
Right, we'd have to get more...
We'd have to get subdivisions to say, yes, we'd like to come in. The benefits of doing that would be they'd get police protection, they'd get a chance to vote in city elections, there would be the possibility that we'd run water lines and sewer lines out there.
Trash picked up.
There would be some advantages to it, some disadvantages, they'd have to pay city taxes, and so, you know, it depends upon whether the people in that area would vote to do it or not, you know?
Right. So it'd be Silver Beach stores' best interest to help sell that.
They're trying to tell people in that area between Hartford and out there, hey, if you want beer out here, you better, you better go for annexation.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna spend gas to run to Hartford, yeah.
Exactly.
I think you must talk to Karen, 'cause she has...
I think if you get the right number of people talking annex, that could be some revenue for Hartford, if we got it.
But that would be, and maybe it's just people in this area just right across the bridge, down, down to the left Riverside Drive there, you know, it may be that they would like to come into the city and get sewer, you know, get water lines, of course, they're getting county water there.
Right.
But sewer lines, you know, and...
Trash picked up, all that.
Police just go across the bridge and make a, you know, part of the route there, and so there's some advantages that they could benefit by being so close, you know?
And I think Hartford, as far as their shifts, cover more than the county does.
Probably, we have twenty-four hours, seven days a week.
And the county doesn't, they don't patrol twenty-four hours, but the city does.
Three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
That's right, so that's a, that's a benefit for those that wanted to...
Exactly. So...
Not even the state. The state, even though the state patrols twenty, but they don't patrol here twenty-four.
Right.
Seven.
Right.
They're on shifts too, so Hartford is the only police coverage that you can count on for Hartford, right?
Right.
During the wee hours.
Yeah, Beaver Dam patrols theirs, and other than that, anybody else out in the county is at the mercy of the county or the state police.
Right.
And response time on that may be...
Long time.
Maybe a lot more than put it in.
You know, when seconds count, they're minutes away, there's a lot of seconds and minutes.
And people don't understand that benefit that Hartford provides in having that kind of police protection. That has to come out of their tax dollars, you know?
Sure.
So anyway...
I think you got good people here for them too, so I think...
I, you know, we've got some, you know, we've, we've got conscientious employees all across the board in the city. I'm proud of our people who work for the city, they make a lot of sacrifices, they work for, they could probably get more pay if they were at somewhere else, you know, bigger city or something like that, but they love Hartford, and they want the best for the people of Hartford, and I'm proud of them.
Yeah, me too.
I have one last thing to bring up.
Hey, you both.
Oh, I'm sorry, she's gotta keep me straight. Okay, if you're in favor of all those board appointments, would you, thank you, I appreciate it. All right, the one last thing that we have listed is the alcohol beverage control deadlines. In a nutshell, we have an ordinance that says that people who have a liquor license in Hartford, and there are five liquor licenses, they have to renew thirty days before December thirty-one, and then...
And that's our ordinance?
That's ours. The state says they have to renew their license before January thirty-one. Now, we're thirty days before, we say you gotta do it before the first of the year.
Right.
The state says you gotta do it before January thirty-one.
For the next, for that year.
Yeah, we cannot issue our license until the state issues their license.
And the state don't care about our license?
Well, the state doesn't issue their license till after we require our people to apply for their license. Now, there's two ways of approaching this. We can turn a deaf eye and ear to our ordinance and make them get their license after they get their state license, okay? Or we can rewrite our ordinance, alter our ordinance amended to, to, before the January thirty-one deadline, like the state does. But what it does, it creates a problem because there's some confusion by those who have the liquor license, you know, that we're saying, you gotta pay this before January one, but we can't issue it until you pay your state license, which is before January thirty-one, and it's just a confused, confused. Now, what we've done this, this year was, we just said, you know, we're not gonna require you to pay, we've gone against our ordinance, we said we're not gonna require you to pay until after you got your state license, okay?
We only give the license after they get their state, they just had to get their state thirty days early to comply.
This is, it's just some confusion.
But then we not amend the ordinance?
We can amend the ordinance. Now, every time we do an ordinance, it has to be published in the paper.
Yes.
Okay.
And every time you publish it in the paper.
It costs money, okay?
I can't believe how much it costs to amend an ordinance.
Yeah, it depends on how much, how big the ordinance is, you know?
How big is this ordinance?
Well, the reason it's on the agenda is 'cause there is a local business that asked, is very upset about the timing, so Doris said he would discuss it with you all. And then there is another, there was another business that did not bring it up, but they also had issues of getting someone to issue their license early as well. Anytime you talk to alcohol beverage control, you get little information if assistance.
Now...
It's not as...
Unless you're in violation, then they're right on top of it.
To amend the ordinance, we would have to have Tara rewrite the ordinance, we'd have to have, when you do an ordinance, there has to be a first reading, you read it, not the whole thing, you just read, we just read the caption at the top. And then you would have a second reading at your next meeting, okay? You would have the second reading, that's when you would vote on it, that's the way an ordinance takes place, okay? The idea comes up, you write the ordinance, you have a first reading at a meeting, then at the next meeting, you have the second reading and vote on it then, and then it's gotta be published, and, okay, that's the way ordinances work. So what would you like to do? Would you like for us to just kinda turn the blind eye to the ordinance? I don't like that.
I don't either.
Well, I don't either.
There's, there's one other, there's one other option, as far as if you do change your ordinance, there was, it has been overlooked, when we wrote this ordinance, to cover alcohol sampling, so when our local business wants to do wine testing, at this point, they can do that, and there is no fee imposed on them because it was not included in our ordinance.
Right.
So that is something that if you, if you do decide to change it, you might wanna entertain the idea that you would also put that in there, 'cause most places have a sampling license fee. Or they're doing it for...
Yeah, there's a fee for everything that you do with alcohol, whatever you do, whether you make it, you bottle it, you drink it, you sell it, whatever, there's a fee for it.
But I mean, it's not, it's not like we've got fifteen liquor stores that are doing sampling, okay, that you're really gonna see any of the revenue, it's just that it, it was something that was omitted from the original ordinance.
And if we wanted to include it in an ordinance, we could also amend the requirement.
Both at the same time.
So that's what I think we should do, because I don't like to turn into the old head.
The advertisement.
Policy.
Around eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred?
It depends on how many pages that you're actually putting in. Tara, usually, we usually try to summarize as much as we can and make it, and I ask for them to do this small legal font, they have their requirements, so they can only publish a certain small font, but this probably was eight hundred dollars when it was, when it was sent.
Just let Jerry read it. But if we're just amending it, then it would just be the amendment.
Just let Jerry read it, don't let him go.
I mean, you still have to do your second, first reading.
So if we made a motion today to do that, it would still be, what, two months before?
Well, see, it's already taken care of this year, so there's no hurry.
So we got, we got it all year.
Yeah, for that part of it, now for the wine tasting, you know, that licensing, we'd like get it done as quick as possible for that reason, but...
Especially, you know, before the summertime, that's when they...
How much money would come in from a wine tasting party?
It'd be just on the license. See, Hartford, being less than three thousand people, we can have liquor sales in Hartford, we can charge license fees to those who wish to sell it, we cannot collect sales tax on the sale of liquor. Beaver Dam can, because they're over three thousand. So the Kentucky League of Cities has a political agenda that they try to bring before the legislature each year, and included in that this year is a request to allow cities less than three thousand to go ahead and collect the sales tax, like the cities over three thousand are doing. So we're hopeful that that's gonna pass.
Because the statute that allowed Hartford to have a vote in the first place, what... what prevented Hartford was that same thinking because of our population numbers. But when that was.
The legislature said would do away with it, no wait, no size limit on any.
Right, but they didn't put in place no size limit for the city revenue tax.
Nobody asked them to do that.
Well, it wasn't included whenever they allowed smaller cities, they did not include the sales tax provision for.
That was a big oversight.
It was. And we've been fighting, we've been fighting for a couple legislative sections to get it put back.
That was a whole kind of motivation, so the city could have some revenue, because we're talking about revenue.
Well, you stop and think, how many cities under three thousand that sell liquor in the state? And it's probably not a whole lot, you know? And so, that's a, that's a smaller priority issue for legislators than dealing with a pension fund or something like that, you know?
That's a bigger priority for that little city. Now, if the county ever had that, where it went countywide, wouldn't that include Hartford would be able to?
No, the county would get that tax money.
Yeah, all of it, because usually there's a city tax in there too.
Yeah, well, see, we don't, right now, don't have the ability to impose a city tax, so.
How much is the license for, per the merchant?
Oh, it varies, depends on what you do, like package stores are what, thousand, twelve hundred dollars, something like that.
So, one license pays for this one at one time, one time deal, basically?
Yeah.
We don't know what the license would be for the wine tasting or the tasting.
It's, it's by state, it's, it's state mandated, and we've actually, we, we don't have that in our.
And that's why I'm saying it's.
Right, but we can add that in, when we amend, when we amend our own ordinance, it can be.
If you wanna put it in there, you can.
How many storeheads would we have to annex to get it up to three thousand?
Well, that's what I mean, an annex would, would, uh, would increase our numbers as well. I think we ought to try to annex as far as we can out of every direction.
I did too, I did too, and I've said that for a long time.
There's probably been more, okay, there's, there's a listing of all the fees and.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's, it's pretty.
So, a thousand dollars, I think, is what.
Pretty extensive, you know?
Well, the only thing I think about, if we don't impose the wine tasting, that could lead to a problem all of its own. I know a few vineries that like to come in, have a wine tasting.
Well, they have to do it on site though, don't they?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
They can't do it anyplace else except at the liquor store.
Oh.
Right.
I can have one in my house.
Well, not legally.
Because you don't have to drive home from your house.
That's right.
You have it at the liquor store everywhere, like, okay.
Not legally, okay.
So, it is on the agenda though to be discussed for the population this time?
Yeah.
So, is that something that?
That's what I saw the other day.
So, is that something that you need, you would wanna wait on this then? Because I hadn't heard that yet.
Well, that's just a sales tax thing, is all it is, it's the deadline on, on the licenses.
Right, but there may be other things that you're gonna wanna change if that were to pass.
It was pretty limited what they were gonna do as far as the liquor.
I'm just saying, this really is no impact until next year.
Right, and so, we can table this for.
I mean, you can, it's, I mean, if that were to do so.
But you can go ahead and say, you know, we won't do this and we'll start Tara to revamping the, revising the.
And then we can just decide later when.
The deadline of the license and the wine tasting.
Well, she's gonna have to rewrite the, these parts of that pertain to what we're talking about, okay? And we would have, then have to have two readings on it unless we call special meetings, that would take two months. So, if you're not careful, you, you get three months down the road, next thing you know.
It's on top of you.
Yeah. What would you like to do, would you like to rewrite or amend the ordinance? Or would you like for us to illegally?
No, I think we need to rewrite the ordinance.
I think we do too.
And include the uh wine tasting. That's what I propose.
Motion.
I make a motion.
I second.
All right, any discussion in favor? Thank you.
That end of the tables off quite down there, what's wrong with that? Are they smart?
In that motion, is it to amend it to make the date coincide?
Why say anything?
I'm too old.
It's like, why say anything, they're gonna jump on it?
Uh, that's all we can actually uh move, uh, do any business on, just those I have since they did special call meeting. Uh, anytime that we meet other than the fourth Thursday at five o'clock, it's gonna be a special call meeting. And so, it would be limited uh as far as the agenda. If you have something that you want to include on the agenda, by all means, contact us and let us know if you've got an issue that you wanna bring up before the council. But uh normal meetings, we don't have that requirement, you can bring it up at the meeting anytime, you know, we can, it doesn't have to be on the agenda for a normal meeting.
So, we're still meeting again this month?
No. Next Thursday, which would be our regular meeting, you'll be in the KLC training over in Owensboro. You'll be getting out of it about five thirty, something like that.
I wrote that down, what time is that? I don't think I wrote that down.
Uh, sign in, sign in is like seven, seven thirty, eight.
Eight, eight to nine.
Yeah.
To be honest, they're probably won't actually start.
On Wednesday, yeah.
And that's next Wednesday?
Starts at Wednesday, yeah.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, three heavy dates, let me tell you.
Well, Friday's, it quits about lunchtime.
So, that's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, it does quit about lunchtime.
Have we signed there? Did you ask me to sign you up?
You registered.
Did I?
You did.
I don't. Let me know if you guys, if I didn't, I need to, I thought that was asked.
No, I didn't, I don't have anything to register with. I said I wanted to go.
Yeah, sign me up.
I mean, I'll just go, but I mean.
Okay, make sure, make sure that Eric and Mary Bell are signed up.
And that, and that's all three days or one of the three days?
It's all three, it's, it's got an agenda that covers everything, it can be informational overload like you.
Okay.
Carry a, a big, heavy briefcase, because they're gonna give you a law book and they're gonna give you a briefcase.
Every time I carry a briefcase, I get searched.
They'll do everything for you.
The law book is nice, it's, it's about that thick, it's got every KRS that pertains to anything to do with the city. I keep it on my desk, I look at, you know, multiple times a week and.
I certainly, I handed mine back in ten years ago.
And that's eight, that's eight till noon?
Pardon?
Eight till noon every day?
No, no.
No, eight to five, thirty, five, yeah. And then they'll have a reception one night and feed you if you wanna stay and mingle with the.
Nap sometimes.
But there's some, some things, like uh you'll get one hour of ethics training, which is required of all people every year, um, so that's, that's taken care of. But it's just got a whole myriad of, it's, I mean, they'll separate out, say, all council people go over to this room and all the mayors go to this room and all, all the committee people that are here go to this room. They'll separate it out and give you some even more specific uh.
All the wine pasters over here.
Yeah, that's right. Especially the eight o'clock one.
They'll help you understand a lot more about what's going on.
All right, well, I need that and I'm.
And you actually get twenty-one point seven five hours of credit toward.
C E U's.
Uh, yeah, the council toward certification as a.
Legal polish.
Certified, yeah, certified government city official or something like that, you know, it's, it's nice. But uh there's all kinds of training and my, my opinion is the more training I get, hopefully the more sticks with me and the better job I can do, so. Does anybody have anything that you want us to talk about informational bias?
There was this one on the, from that special call on December fourteenth, uh, when you introduced Mr. Greg Sholters with the government services about collecting delinquent property taxes.
Yeah.
Was we gonna visit with that again or?
Well, we, we were, uh, we were gonna take it under advisement, uh, we're, we're starting a process now to putting liens on delinquent properties in the city. We will publish probably the first part of next month. Uh, we will publish a list of delinquent property taxpayers.
So, so there is a plan or working towards a plan for?
He was gonna do, he was gonna do something that, that we can do ourselves, we should do ourselves.
Right. I mean, he claimed he got a hundred percent participation.
What he's, what he's doing probably too is picking, I'll say, the low hanging fruit, you know, he's gonna, he's gonna get the easier ones. And, you know, he may have a hundred percent uh success rate. That doesn't mean we can't have a hundred percent success rate too. We've got several properties that are abandoned, dilapidated, blighted that we want to address and try to, to gain control of those properties so that we can sell them at the courthouse door to uh remove some eyesores, you know, in town. We've had, we've got people who may not have paid their city taxes for two or three, four years, something like that. We want to put liens on their properties perhaps to encourage them to pay. I noticed that Owensboro last week advertised, had a whole page advertised in the Messenger and Inquirer one day of properties that they'd foreclosed on. It was probably twenty-five, thirty properties that they were selling at the courthouse door. People who hadn't paid taxes, you know, it's not fair to the ones who do pay taxes to allow that.
Right, and that's revenue for the city as well.
Uh, Tara's in the process of uh, uh, starting the, the lien process placing liens on, on these properties. Uh, we actually have a lien anytime that a property is sold. I mean, they're supposed to check, see if all the taxes are paid on it, I'm not sure that that happens.
Do we have a code enforcement officer?
Yes, we do.
Does he come to the meetings and kinda break us up?
He will if we ask him to, I mean, basically, what he does is uh issue citations to people. If they don't clean it up, we go in and clean it up and charge them a hundred dollars per man hour uh plus any expenses.
That's a, that's a lot of uh keeping track of, because when you issue one citation, that thing could take several, unless he fixes the problem, but when you track it, it could take a year.
But we've got, we've got a couple of properties that have been real troublesome to us. There's one over on Frederica Street, rental property. There's uh some properties up on Church Street that are abandoned homes.
Well, the code enforcement can help us keep track of these.
And we, we pay him, we actually pay him by the hour, but it works out to be about two hundred dollars a month, is what it is. And he issues the citations, I mean, he's been to training, we've been training together and he, he, uh, if he sees or hears of any kind of uh code enforcement violations, he does issue those, it's a ten dollar fine the first time. If it's not rectified in a certain number of days, then the city will go in and we will clean it up and we will send them a bill. If they don't pay it, then we put a lien on their property for that. So, uh, it's just a long process.
It is, because for what this guy said he could do.
But he can't do anything with code enforcement, so he, all he's doing is just.
Right, he's helping collect the taxes off of it.
We have some people who don't cooperate with the city very well, so it, it really is a thrill for me to put a lien on their property.
Who has a code enforcement officer?
Pardon?
Who is it?
Oh, Nathan Rucker, it's Tara, Tara's husband. He does a good job, you know, he sends them letters, uh, we've had people come in and pay their ten dollar fine, clean their place up, uh, EPA's been at the house on Frederica Street to uh.
Is it that trailer that's right there?
No, it's the house.
It's the house, there's a trailer right down.
Right from it, which probably.
Is it the brick one or the?
This guy's dog always saw it out there.
It's Kenny's neighbor, you know?
That glued their backyard to it?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I suppose to. I mean, it's, it's just a constant struggle with them, you know, there's some.
Well, I'm all for trying to get all this done ourselves, but after a period of time, if we're still way behind, I don't know, we can consider it later, but uh revenue, it seems like we're getting to, we need to generate revenue somehow.
Well, we're, we're going to address the uh delinquent properties. Actually, we've done a better job with the delinquent properties last year than the year before, didn't we?
We had a long list that we published.
Hey, progress is progress, however it's like.
Yeah, uh, we're beginning to make some believers out of some people, you know, paying water bills, paying property taxes, things like that, we're. It's gonna be like this every meeting for a couple of months till you get your questions answered and you get your feet a little more firmly on the ground and feel a little more comfortable about it. And I don't know what you ever do, but.
I took my train this time, I'll let y'all do it next time.
Um, I was on it for nine years and it's silly, I feel like I understood everything that was going on. You don't really unless you're here day by day and.
That's what's gonna take.
Pardon?
That's what's gonna take, I think, coming down here.
Yeah.
Of course, I hate bothering Lisa, she's got all this numbers and everything, she's gotta figure that out, still guilty. Ask her.
You watch her a few days, I'm dating you too.
Well.
I possibly got a new water heater, I mean, water heater, water frock it right there in front of my church, the fire hydrant.
Oh, fire hydrant?
And I never did get it.
Okay. Where is the closest hydrant?
Closest one is up probably five hundred feet, no, about six hundred feet, that's on Oakwood Drive.
Okay.
I possibly got one, I just wonder.
You gonna feel safer if there's one right there by your place? Okay. We'll talk about it, we'll see what we can do. We'll, we'll, you know how much hydrants cost, okay, no.
I know you have a bunch of them, no.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
I make a motion.
All right, second.
I second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Thank you, motions carried, appreciate it, thank you all for being.
Thank you.